Okay, may I have a motion to return to open session? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. First selectmen's report. So last week, the Chamber of Commerce held a little gathering at Darien Commons to help celebrate the start of the tenants beginning to fill the apartments over there and also opening up some of the retail space. It's really starting to turn a corner and it's really terrific to see what's happening. And also in that area of town, you might have noticed that the V20 group has begun demolition over at the New Oaten Heights Shopping Center. The Board of Finance, we have a representative here tonight. Board of Finance held a public hearing on the budget on March 14th. And the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen budgets are up on our town website if anybody wants to take a look. And there's also data there on the timing for the Board of Finance budget discussions. Just want to make sure we're not being joined by someone. Marcy and I were able to attend the Board of Education's annual tour of the schools on Saturday morning, Saturday morning. Purpose of the tour, and Rob was there also, purpose of the tour was to preview the Board of Education approved 2023, 2024 capital projects and to see the current progress over at Ox Ridge. So I want to, I really, I want to thank everybody that's worked on these building committees. I want to especially thank Sarah Newman and Marcy Minnick for their participation and all of our residents that have stepped forward to help on these. These projects are really coming along, but it takes all of these people's efforts to make them the success that they are turning out to be. Last week, I attended the final meeting of the IT Steering Committee and I'm looking forward to a recap of suggestions from the committee. But in the meantime, I'd like to thank John Zagrotzky, who chaired that committee, and all of the people that worked on it. Again, this is another one of those committees where a lot of work was done, took just under two years, but these will, these suggestions and these programs will have a lot of impact on our residents and on our town working. So really appreciate all of the work that they did. PURA's decision to order a small rate increase instead of an approximately 30% proposed rate increase is very good news for our residents. As I pointed out in my testimony to PURA in October of last year, the requested spike in rates combined with the overall increase in the cost of living due to the record high inflation that we are in would have had a very negative impact on all of our homeowners and businesses as well as the municipal operations of our town itself. Steve Olvany and I submitted testimony in strong opposition to the Planning and Development Committee on Senate Bill Number 1141, an Act Concerning Transit Oriented Development, and on Senate Bill Number 985, an Act Incentivizing Housing Production. Our opposition lies with the fact that these bills would largely eliminate the rights of municipalities to manage their own land use. We believe that local control of review and decision-making are essential to meet the current and future needs of our residents. The COVID Test Center, that's over in St. John's, in the parking lot there, will close as of March 31st. Demand has really dropped off there. Eight weeks, eight weeks, eight people were tested last week and on two of the days of operation, there were no visitors. So we appreciate the work that they did over there. And again, just letting people know that that center is closing on March 31st. The Great Island, Great Island process started just about a year ago when I visited with Ned Steinkrauss, whose family owns Great Island. We are very grateful to the Steinkrauss family for giving us the opportunity to bid on the property that has so much meaning for them. Great Island will be a defining piece of land within town that will be enjoyed by all. The exquisite views and the landscape are unlike anything else in Darien. So owning this property will, I believe, increase our quality of life and our property values. The Board of Finance will fund acquisition of Great Island through the issuance of long-term tax-exent bonds that will be paid over a period of 30 years, similar to a mortgage. And furthermore, the Town of Darien has earned a AAA rating from Moody's Investor Service, which is the highest category that a municipality can receive. And this is allowing us access to some attractive borrowing rates. My office will be meeting with town departments before the closing to prioritize work that has to be done there in preparation for welcoming our community to the property. This is just very basic, basic work that needs to be done. The property has no defined uses as of this time, so this is very basic work. And finally, I want to say happy spring to everyone. Today's first day of spring. So thank you. Kate, do you have anything?
Just following up on your report on the IT Committee. We had a kickoff meeting with the company that will be doing the website upgrade last week. And one of the first orders of business will be to actually look at styles that we want for the theme of the colors and things like that. So we're excited to get that going, but it is going to be a long process. It won't happen overnight, several months long process, but we're excited to be getting that going.
So you think start to finish?
Maybe six months.
Six months?
Yeah.
Okay. I saw the survey. Are you still collecting responses for that?
You know, I have to check and see if everybody has responded or if I've gotten a decent percentage of the departments responding.
Right. Open-ended questions? That was?
Well, yes. And that was, you know, with a member of the IT Committee, we asked department heads what they aren't getting from the website now that they want, what kind of information they want to be able to push out to the public, some things like that. So to help us as we design the new one.
Great. Okay. Anything else, Kate? Do you have any, do you have any public comment? Okay. Selecting reports, liaison reports?
For the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee, our last meeting was on March 1st. The next one is this coming Wednesday, March 22nd, and it is a big meeting. As of right now, the state of Connecticut has approved their projects to go to big, which is huge. And we have selected a commissioning agent. This week, we will be discussing and also be voting on retaining a commissioning agent, give possible action on updated Phase Two bid documents and cost estimate for all three school projects. Once we approve those, they go to the Board of Education for their vote on March 28th. And we'll also be voting on construction trialings if they come in. So the upcoming dates that are very important are March 28th for the Board of Ed and on March 30th, their Phase One bids are due for all three projects. So we have a lot of big due dates coming up. For the Thriving Youth Task Force, the last meeting was on March 16th, this past Thursday. There was a recap of the Darien Youth Community Conversation from the library on March 7th. It was an update on the survey, programming, senior send-off, and the Rowan Center and the domestic violence, DVCC, I might blank in the last two, I'm sorry, presented about trends in teen dating abuse. There are some upcoming events that they have going on. This Wednesday, the 22nd, at 7:00 PM, the Darien Library is presenting a screening and a panel discussion of "Don't Wait," an award-winning film from the nonprofit organization Addiction is Real. And the screening will be followed by a discussion with Executive Director Erin Kelly and Vice President Terry Douglas of Addiction is Real, including one of the mothers in the film. This is being presented by the Thriving Youth Task Force, the Depot, Silver Hill, and YWCI Parent Awareness. You can register at Community Fund Darien. The parent survey is coming up and that is available to parents of sixth to 12th graders. And that's in advance of a student survey that the Thriving Youth is doing with the Darien Public Schools. And if you missed the March 7th, What Darien Teens Wish Adults Knew, which was the follow-up from the Darien Youth Community Conversation, it is now available on the Thriving Youth Task Force website for viewing. And the next meeting for Thriving Youth is on May 18th at 9:30 AM. Sorry, I had to read that one as well.
Sarah, the surveys, are those, how often are those done?
They were every three years and now they're going to be every two years.
Okay. Okay. Marcy?
Sure. Ox Ridge Building Committee met last week Thursday and we had the opportunity to go over on Saturday and see it. And it's just beautiful. I mean, it's come out, it's come out beautifully. We are at about 70% completion of the Assembly Wing, which is the Stage Two, which you can really kind of see the formation of the property. They started putting things into the gym and kind of making it look, you can kind of really get a footprint of how the school is going to flow. So things are great there, on budget, on time. Looks like the kids will be in the school fully come, you know, end of August, beginning of September. And things are going great. So a huge thank you to Kip Coons, who's been chairing our committee for the last almost four years, and to Dr. Forsaw, who, you know, has been a liaison at the school and really has done a great job making sure that this school is exactly what this community needs. So things are good there. Mental Health Task Force, we are meeting on Wednesday and going to go over the final agenda for our program, which will be at the beginning of May, and that is resiliency training that will be kind of discussing how parents could recognize and identify when a child isn't stressed and how to work through those. So all is good.
Okay, great. So they're on budget?
On budget.
Not below budget?
Well...
Thought we were below budget.
Just slightly, just slightly below.
All right. That's good.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Marcy. Thanks, Sarah. Any comments from the public? No? Kate, anything written?
No.
Okay. First order of business is to discuss and take action on a request to accept and appropriate a gift of $15,000 from the Darien Little League and to recommend the approval of the gift and appropriation to the RTM. So Kate, you want to?
Pam?
Pam, you're going to cover?
Will do.
Thank you, Pam.
So as you just mentioned, I could send a memo in describing where you're seeking your approval for a field evaluation for two baseball fields and a softball field in the line. And Darien Little League has been generous enough to offer that donation to get this one done. It's been well over 20 years. They've seen some shifts in the grade and it's a good chance to get this evaluation done and see what it will take to get the fields back to its original shape.
Pam, is this, are they planning on doing that this spring?
All depends, I got to get this out to bid if it's approved.
Okay.
So certainly would like to get it sooner than later, just depends on how quickly we can get that.
So would they do this when the season is open? When does the season open?
I highly doubt it's going to be spring that we can put all this together. So it seems likely that it would be summertime to get the valuation done. And then, you know, say, I've heard a number up to, depending on the level of grading needed, up to $30,000. And then Little League will have to go back and evaluate, you know, when they can, when and if they have those funds for that.
To do the work. Right? Okay. And this was, the last time there was any kind of evaluation was when?
They haven't had an evaluation as far as I know all this time. We have just continued to maintain at the level we can maintain it at. But we don't have the expertise to go into evaluate what exactly needs to be done to fix them to their current, original state.
Are there concerns that there's like dips in the outfield or what?
There are some sinking areas and yeah, that would need to have to be regraded. And then I'm concerned about areas where water is filling and staying, so it's washing away, roding some of the fields as well. So there's a number of reasons why they feel that this would be money well spent.
The renovation of the playground has nothing to do with this, right?
Nothing.
Right? Okay. All right.
That will take place in June.
In June. Do we have a start date for that?
No, just June.
Just June. Okay.
All depends on when they...
There's only 30 days in June. Just giving you a little heads up.
Yes. Just one quick question, is, does Darien Little League use a lot of the fields at any of the elementary schools?
I can't answer that right now. I think that there may be some, but they use town fields and that park.
Yeah, they use... The only thing I'm concerned about is I know that with all of this remodeling happening with the schools, and it's great and I'm super appreciative, but I know field space is going to be so minimal.
Actually, Marcy, you're correct because one gentleman did get in touch with me and said that they're going to have to start really planning.
Yeah. So when they, yes, that's my point. When they start this process and there is going to be some construction on it, keep in mind that the elementary schools are going to have no fields for...
They know they're going to have to start planning for that. We're also certainly have to look at where we can utilize all the fields that we have.
And I certainly wouldn't want this $15,000 to be held up because we can't get rid of those fields and have it expire, right? Any kind of work that they do to look at what happens, I don't want to come back in a year from now and say, oh, we spent $15,000 and we can't do the work right now, so let's put it off till next year and then all of a sudden it's invalid, kind of like what we saw with the Lee Beach project. So keep that in mind before they go ahead and put it out to bid.
I know that they're already putting that on their agendas to talk about.
Good. Thank you.
Do these evaluations, Pam, usually have like an expiration, like a five-year, two-year, one-year?
I could get back to you on that.
I would think the concern would be that the conditions would change, that they'll evaluate and say this is the grade and then it changes soon enough that the conditions will change.
Could, but I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't remember reading any of that specifically, but, and I think the intent is that we're going to move ahead.
Right.
And I think the intent is that Little League has some funding that they are willing to put into these fields. They feel it's very important. So I think the timing, the timeline could work perfectly for possibly fall, meaning getting the evaluation done in the summer and then maybe doing the work in the fall.
I just know that it feels like crazy to fall off, so...
But if you could go into, you know, they can do the work in November.
Okay.
You know, right up into November, December. If you had a mild winter like this year, you could do it right through the winter.
Thank you. You're welcome.
No. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Pam. May I have a motion to accept and appropriate the gift of $15,000 from the Darien Little League and to recommend approval of the gift and appropriation to the RTM? Marcy moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. Thanks, Pam. Thank you for explaining. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to approve the Run With the Saints. Run? Kate?
So this is St. Luke's and this is their seventh annual Run With the Saints and it's been approved by the Police Commission. You should have the approval there. I don't think they need the parks and rec. I don't think they use the park facilities.
They're just on the road.
Yeah.
So Kate, we're going to look at another one. Do they ever have a rain date?
No.
Okay. Near shine.
I think they run, yeah.
They have run in the rain before.
Yeah. It's runners.
Yes. And it's on a Sunday, so it's a lower road use day.
Right. Okay. And all roads are open? We have our police commissioner here to confirm that. Okay. Any further discussion?
I support it.
Okay. Did you run last year?
No, but I have before and my daughter has run before, so...
So we're going to put you down for this year?
Sure.
And take that as a yes? Okay. May I have a motion to approve St. Luke's annual run with the Saints to take place on Sunday, November 5th, subject to the requirements of the Darien Police Department? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discuss and take action, what's that on? The second annual run for Ukraine on May 21st. Kate?
Well, this is the second annual. It's been approved by Parks and Rec because there will be some parks and rec facilities and it's been approved by the police department. So I think they had a pretty tremendous turnout last year.
You know, I was there for this one, trying to remember.
It was in July, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was later in the year, but...
So one of the things we decided was not to shut the park down, not to shut the beach down in the middle of the summer for this. But I see there were a lot of people there. It was very well-attended and it's, there are races that people try to go to. They try to do a race in every town. And so there were a lot of participants for that. So this 200 to 300 number is big. I think the seven to 10 versus the one hour for St. Luke's is interesting. St. Luke's never actually goes on Pear Tree though, right? They just go down to the beach and turn around, right?
No, I think they're on...
They don't go to the, St. Luke's, the St. Luke's race. They don't...
Oh, they don't go to the, no, they're not on the beach. They go on Pear Tree, Point Road. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this is in May, so we're talking about different crap.
Right?
Right?
Right.
If you want to roll this, I'm sorry, we changed it.
You know, if you want to speak, just because the camera rolls and we need people to, so if you could give us your name and where your address?
Hello, my name is Tatiana Pokorska. I'm the president of Blue and Yellow Ukraine, nonprofit organization that we organized race last year in July. This year, we decided to go earlier because a lot of people are going to the beach, so we don't want to actually interface with that. So we do it in May this year and just before the park will be open for the residents. And we changed the role this year. It's going to be just through the pure tree road and not going around the loop because last year it was two times around the residential area and this time it's going to be from the beach down the road on pure tree.
And what's your address? I'm sorry.
I'm from Norwell.
Okay.
But we have a running club and a club etiquette supporting us in this.
Right. That's what I remember, that's what it was. Okay. So how many people did you have last year?
We had not quite 300.
Right. Okay. And I'm trying to remember, did we, as far as bathroom facilities, were we?
I...
So finish these bathrooms, because you guys have two bathrooms and we had one more portable bathroom. So this year, I'm planning to add two more bathrooms to just make sure that it wasn't enough. The other thing we had, somebody didn't come to open it, so we had a line that was an issue. But other than that, if those bathrooms would be opened, we wouldn't have the issues.
Okay. So we'll make sure on that. So you're bringing two portable potties as well? Okay. Okay. And so when you, when, for the time, seven to 10, so 10 is, everybody is gone?
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Yeah, race usually goes one hour, so it's 8:30, we have the set time for 8:30. Usually it's about one hour and then, you know, we have walkers, maybe they will take a couple minutes later and then we'll take the announcements of the presses and stuff like that. So just, we're taking it all but wider range of time just to be out in those times.
Right. And the police didn't think we had to close any roads?
No, they say it should be fine.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
It was not their last year. I was curious to know how it was done.
Yeah. I think it was a little, I think the loop was, it was a little confusing.
Exactly. That's why we're trying to change it because loop was very confusing to people.
Right. Especially with the walkers, you know, the second bat, yeah, it was a little...
Yeah, and then the finish line was kind of like you had to go back to the, to the park and nobody knows kind of like where it's going. Yeah, so it was kind of a little bit of, yeah, the navigation wasn't that great.
Do you have the same number of volunteers as last year?
We actually hope that we can get even more, but we had a lot to do for last year. We probably get at least, if not maybe more.
So it is the same number?
Yeah.
You're thinking? Okay. Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate the change in date. That's helpful.
Timing will help you.
Yeah, that was good. Okay. Thanks for coming in. Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the second annual run for Ukraine on May 21st, 2023? Sarah moves?
Sorry.
Marcy seconds. I was like, wait, who's going to do this one? Okay. Terrific. So unanimous. And Kate, do I have to fill out that little form or?
No, you don't have to. No, that's, they fill that out.
Okay. Okay. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of $40,000 for Darien Police Department locker room expansion and renovation. And we have Brent Hayes here, Darien Police Commissioner, to give us some information.
Thank you for having me tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you for all the work you guys are doing, by the way. New school, Great Island, as a resident. Thank you. Appreciate it. As a police commissioner, I'm here to talk about a transfer request of $40,000 to renovate and expand the female locker room. So the good news is we currently have, we have a full staff, 51 full-time police officers, of which 10 are female officers. We just did hire our 11th female officer. She's currently at Meriden Police Academy and she graduates in July of 2023. So simple math tells you 10 lockers, 10 females today. We just hired our 11th. We don't have enough locker space for our future employees, which again is going to be pretty quick in July. So the equipment that we purchased for her is currently being stored in one of the men's lockers, spare locker that we have in the men's locker room. And if you take the $40,000 out, I'll just sum it up. It breaks out to be $15,000 architectural fee, $15,000 engineering fee, $8,000 interior design fee, and $2,000 for hardware consultant fees. Importantly, I do want to point out, I didn't deal directly with the architect, but I had a brief conversation with him today, asked a little bit more specifics about the costs. And there's a lot that goes into it. It's not just simple blueprints and design work, but there are consultants, there are people that he needs to use, which impacts mechanical, electrical, ductwork, plumbing, and as I just mentioned, interior finishings as well. So in 2011, we had a building committee. I was participating in it at that point in time. I know we did discuss, the chief, Chief Lavelle at the time, our former chief, the building committee did discuss, you know, we knew that we would have this need at some point in time. I guess we collectively kicked the can down the road. So it's not a nice-to-have, maybe that's what it was back then, but this is kind of a must-have at this point in time. With that being said, I would say to you that, you know, lockers, we're going to need an additional seven lockers. That's what we're looking for right now. And the cost there, we don't have a definitive cost yet, but it's in the estimate, I would say $20,000, $25,000. So with that said, can I do my best to answer any questions that you may have? And by the way, Chief Anderson would be here tonight, but he's down in Quantico, Virginia at the FBI Academy.
What's an excuse? So Brent, what is, what's the timing on this? If this candidate is done, is coming back in July? What are you thinking for timing?
Don't know yet. So what we have to do is hire the architect first and I have to ask Captain Udema, who is a liaison with Department of Public Works. So Department of Public Works is really dealing directly with the architect. So what I can say is we're looking to get this done yesterday.
Do you have an overall cost for the project?
So I spoke to the architect today. I have to defer to the, you know, Department of Public Works at the end of the day, but he estimated that the construction on top of the costs I just mentioned would be around $100,000. So don't quote me on that, but I think you know, it's a pretty good estimate from his perspective.
Do we need to go to bid, given the price?
For the architect? No, it's professional service.
No, it's professional service.
Oh, but for you?
Yeah.
But for the construction?
The construction, we'll go.
Okay. Are we adding square footage, or is this just reconfiguring within the square footage that we have?
Think renovation, yeah, we're limited on the square footage that we have.
Got it.
It's square footage of the locker room, though.
Right.
Not the building. You've got to...
Correct.
There's got to be more, it's, the locker room's got to get bigger somehow, right?
Locker room has to get bigger. It may, there's two different designs, I think it's kind enough to actually give us two designs already. I don't know if we're going to go forward with, if there's more collaboration here. It could go into the hallway, it could extend into the men's locker room. I took a piece of cardom here, we're touring today of both the, there's no one there, female and male locker room. I think Rob will tell you the same thing, there is just no room in the female locker room at this point in time. We have 10 lockers, right, 10, 10 female officers. There's no room to just even temporarily put an 11th locker in there. We have a Tokanye Constable that reports into the chief of police. She doesn't have a dedicated locker, but does use the locker room as well. There's one shower in there, two stalls, I mean, it's, it's pretty small. It definitely needs to be renovated, it's, it's dead.
So I have a question. There's been some serious issues with the sewers, pipes in that, and particularly with the women's locker rooms.
Yes.
Is this something that's being looked at carefully with this scope, or no?
I don't think that this is going to be addressing that.
But if we're increasing the load on that area, well, if we're going to have another shower, another bathroom...
Are they planning to add another shower stall?
I don't know what they're doing in terms of plumbing, how many more showers or anything, but what I'm saying now is like, you couldn't, I guess my takeaway there would be, it's not that we have four showers and let's get rid of one.
No, 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 I'm saying add, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the...
You can find, yeah.
It's the septic, right, so it's not the, I, I don't know where the shower drains, if it drains, but...
Because they've had problems.
They've had problems, it, I think it's, it's undersized, and it's, like, it doesn't drain well, so they have to jet water through it. I don't think that they're going to be fixing that, that's, that hasn't been raised, because I think that would require a lot of, a lot more construction.
But it should be looked at, because if they're adding additional...
Well, we, yeah, don't add worse, make it worse.
Brent, going back to this, on fees, we have design, we have interior design for $8,000. And then on additional services, we have designer services related to the owner's selection and procurement of furniture, fixtures, et cetera, is, is an additional cost. So what does the interior design fee cover?
I'd have to get the specifics from Department of Public Works. But I did speak to the architect today, included, you know, mashing floor tiles, for example, mashing carpets, for example, and just overall installation and design.
So I guess anything that's attached, so anything that is not attached, they would provide input on, but we would be charged additionally. Does that sound right?
Sounds right, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, just so I understand, okay.
And again, this is not something that I'm not, it's not a, you know, nice-to-have at this point. It's just we're at that point where we have to do, we already do it on square footage. It's the only thing we can do, you cannot do in addition, it has to be a renovation.
Got it.
And there's a lot involved with that, obviously with the building.
Right.
What is the age of the facility within that section?
I think that's probably the older section.
Because they're not... They're saying that there are no responsibilities for identifying or dealing with asbestos, is that a possible issue?
So I can't tell you when that part, I can, I can tell you that there have been three expansions and renovations, and the 6886 in 2011, I don't know if that was touched in 2011 or not.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? No? All right. May I have a motion to approve the request for a transfer of $40,000 for Darien Public Department, Darien Police Department Locker Room Expansion and Renovation? Sarah moves, Marcy seconds, all in favor, terrific, unanimous. Thank you, Brent.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a reappointment of a member of the Parks and Rec Commission for a term ending March 31st, 2025. May I have a motion to reappoint Susan Daly to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term ending March 31st, 2025? Marcy moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor, terrific, okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of March 6th. Do we have any additions, corrections, deletions? Kate, I just have one, new business, there's just, um... The last line on three, just staggered seats, I'd say delete that.
Page five.
So delete staggered seats with a question mark? Okay, so with that edit, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Sarah moves, Marcy seconds, all in favor, unanimous, terrific. Okay, agenda review, any topics that members would like to see on future agendas?
Darren.
No, okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Marcy moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor, terrific, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, 79.